Good morning, everyone. Apologies for starting a little late here. Welcome. I'm going to call this meeting to order for the morning of June 13th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez. Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Doan.
Present.
Candelaus.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra. Batra? He looks like he's frozen. He is online. Kamay. Mahan.
Here.
I would like to note that pursuant to AB 2449, Councilmember Batra will be provided notice he will participate in the City Council meeting using the teleconference option under the just cause exemption due to illness. This is his first of two allowed just cause exemptions. We will need to call, roll call for every vote for this meeting and Councilmember Batra will need to say whether or not somebody is in the room with him every time he votes.
Okay, great. And I see we've been joined by the Vice Mayor. Great. Thank you, Tony. We have a quorum. Would all those who are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs.
And of the republic.
Under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're messing up today, Tim.
No, because my, my, I'm stuck.
What? Did you hear Batra? No?
Yeah, he started, and he always says it fast.
Okay. Great. So our invocation and ceremonial items will be heard in the afternoon at 1:30. So we're on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Okay. I don't see any. We'll move on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a report out of closed session, but I believe the city manager does.
I certainly do. Good morning, everyone. I am very pleased to announce the unanimous council confirmation of Matt Lesch as the new Director of our Public Works Department. Matt will assume the position as a permanent director on June 18th from being the acting director since the end of January. As the city's Public Works Director, Matt will be responsible for the maintenance and construction of municipal systems and will help regulate building in the public rights of way. Public Works is a strategic support department whose core services are diverse and complex, including animal care and services, facilities management, fleet and equipment services, planning, designing, and constructing public facilities and infrastructure, and regulating and facilitating private development. More about Matt. Matt joined the City of San Jose's Public Works Department in 2001 as an engineer, and through a series of promotions, he rose through the ranks. Again, currently, he is our, serving as our Acting Director of Public Works. In his 21 years of experience, Matt has demonstrated the importance of innovating and implementing new tools for the benefit of both the built and lived environments with equity and sustainability in mind while caring for our community animals. Matt holds a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a concentration in structures from the University of Notre Dame and is a licensed civil engineer in the state of California. Before I ask Matt to come up and say a few words, I do want to acknowledge all of the wonderful Public Works Department employees that are in the audience today. Could you all please stand for our city council and the, and the community? Their hard work and commitment to keeping us a first-class city with modern municipal systems and physical assets that allow our diverse community to enjoy life and thrive, and for taking care of our community's animal in need is so appreciated. Really want to thank you all for all of your service. With that, again, let's, let's bring Matt up and thank you again, Matt, for your service. Congratulations.
Good morning, Mayor Mahan, council members, city manager, my colleagues and friends. I am humbled to be named the Director of Public Works. I am grateful for the trust and faith you've placed in me in this appointment. I will work to lead with purpose and vision. In the last couple decades here, I've had some pretty awesome and interesting experiences. My work has taken me to the full extents of our city boundaries. Some lesser-known things I've gotten to do is I've been in our radio communications Faraday cage. I've surveyed the elevation of the top of the SAP Center, literally on the roof. I helped lead the groundbreaking for this facility, which we actually did right. We bought out a D6 bulldozer and broke up Fifth Street. I also led the retirement board during one of the less calm times that it is to be on a public pension. To the Public Works team, our work suits me, largely not in the limelight and in service of others. I really do love all the services we provide. I've never needed to look for another department for work that interests me. I do, I will do my level best to be worthy of the gift of leadership. I embrace the responsibility that comes with this role, and I'm committed to fostering a culture of excellence, innovation, and collaboration. And sorry, I missed some of the briefings this morning. To my supervisors, I owe you a debt. Priscilla, Sal, John, Patty, Barry, another John, and Matt. Your guidance and belief in my potential was instrumental in shaping who I have become. I'm eternally grateful for your investment in me. My parents gave me a work ethic and appreciation for how blessed we were. Sorry, I committed not to do this to myself. My siblings are a tough act to follow, but you gave me a host of love, competition, and boy, a lot and a lot of tricks. And saving the best for last, I want to express my love and affection for my family to my wife Jackie, my four daughters Melanie, Jackie, Mary, and Maddie, plus our little Vivi and JJ. You are the reason for any of my successes and my purpose in life. Your unwavering support and love and understanding have been my anchor. Your sacrifices and belief in me have given me the strength to pursue this role. Thank you for your source of my inspiration and for celebrating every milestone with me. Thank you.
Congratulations again, Matt.
Yeah, Matt, I'll just add, and I'm sure I say on behalf of the council, not sorry to stop you in your tracks, just once again, congratulations and thank you. Thank you for your servant leadership, the incredible contributions you've already made to our city. And I know we're all very excited to see everything you and the incredible team behind you here will be doing for our residents in, in the years ahead. So congratulations once again, and thank you. And that, I believe, concludes our closed session report. Okay. Thank you all very much, and thank you to our Public Works Department. Keep up the great work. We are on to the consent calendar. I believe Councilor Cohen would like to pull item 2.10 for comment. Are there any other items that council would like to pull from consent? Okay. Why don't we go to public comment first, and then we'll come back to the council?
I'm giving it a second, but I have no hands up.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Councilor Cohen, you want to comment on item 2.10?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just excited about the awarding of these contracts for the two parks, Mercado Park and Brisoni Park. As many people on the council might know, often when these developments are made, like the development of the North Flea Market area with 1,000 new housing units, the parks' space is dedicated, but the space is left to sit for years before the parks are actually built. That was becoming true in the North San Jose area. And so last year, my office worked with city staff to take, transfer of the property so that we would own the land and get the money from the developer to finish the parks so that we could do it ourselves instead of relying on, on them to do it. So I'm excited that construction will start in these two parks in August, and we'll have some new parks in North San Jose in probably mid, by mid next year. So I move the consent calendar, including 2.10.
Right. Second from Davis.
I did need to make an announcement on item 2.17H1. The applicant for Senior Citizens Commission, the District 2 seat, has withdrawn his application this morning. So in that motion, you would approve everything except for 2.17H1.
Okay. I'll accept that amendment to my motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I assume that's fine with the secondor. Excellent. Okay. Let's vote.
Jimenez. Torres.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Ortiz.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Doan.
Aye.
Candelaus.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Batra.
Aye.
Are you alone?
I am alone.
Thank you.
In this room.
Kamay. Mahan.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Forgot that question. Councilor Davis as well. Aware, familiar. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. We are, so consent passes unanimously, correct, Tony? We are on to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item 3.3, Disability Inclusion Equity Pledge, and we have a short presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Sarah Sarate. I'm the Director of the Office of Administration, Policy, and Intergovernmental Relations. I am joined by Rania Mosin, Disability Affairs Officer, and Community Member Michelle Mashburn. We're here today to proudly present to you a proposed Disability Inclusion Equity Pledge. Before handing it off to Rania, I just want to thank Councilmember Pam Foley for her leadership in this really meaningful policy area. I feel very personally dedicated to this work and am really grateful for your partnership. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Rania, who is joining us via Zoom.
Hello. Good morning, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Thank you, Sarah, for the introduction. I really wish I could be with you in person today. Unfortunately, I'm not feeling well and thought it best I participate virtually. Before I begin, I just wanted to note that for this presentation, we are intentionally demonstrating accessibility and disability inclusion. For example, in preparation, we made sure this PowerPoint has appropriate color contrast. And as I present, I will make a point to address all content on the slide and include pauses at the beginning of each slide. The COVID-19 pandemic surfaced many inequities that impacted our marginalized communities, including people with disabilities. In 2022, the City Manager's Office led an initial assessment that included meetings with community members and employees to assess disability access across departments. Our efforts today are in response to the lessons learned, community stakeholder input, and a budget document submitted by Councilmember Pam Foley. In the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget process, council appropriated funding to continue this work and hire a Disability Affairs Officer. As a new Disability Affairs Officer for the city, I will continue the assessment and gap analysis. We are also working with a consultant, the World Institute on Disability, to assist us with this effort. Our efforts will include two phases. Phase one includes the following objectives. One, catalyze a cultural change by building institutional awareness through education and training. Two, support disability affairs organizationally, both internally and externally. And three, improve accessibility in five areas across departments. Communications and information access, community engagement, physical access, employment access, and shared data collection. Phase one outcomes will inform our phase two work plan. As we work to achieve these objectives, we are bringing forward the Disability Inclusion Equity Pledge for your consideration. The purpose of the pledge is to establish a framework and normalize inclusion and accessibility for people with disabilities. Disability intersects with all identities. Thus, advancing the pledge principles will not just improve outcomes for people with disabilities, but also for other marginalized groups that face systemic inequities. More importantly, the pledge represents the notion of nothing about us. That is the idea, that no policy should be decided by any representative without the full and direct participation of members of the groups affected by that policy. And with that in mind, we are joined today by Michelle Mashburn, a member of our own community and Equity Pledge advocate, to read an excerpt from the pledge.
Hi, everybody. My name is Michelle Mashburn. The pledge states people with disabilities experience exclusion through physical, attitudinal, financial, and policy barriers. One of the planks is we commit, we're asking the City of San Jose to commit to prioritizing disability inclusion through a learning process, modeling behavior and action steps which may take us beyond the minimum level of requirement, minimum legal requirement. We affirm that the full and complete realization of the human rights of all persons with disabilities is essential, integral, and invisible part of all human rights and fundamental freedoms. The second one is we confirm that people with disabilities deserve an environment that allows them to participate on an equal basis fully and effectively with others.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you for your continued partnership. Lastly, we want to note a few key highlights of our work moving forward. Our next steps will include an internal accessibility assessment across five pilot departments, review and analysis of disability inclusive practices and our emergency preparedness strategies, restructure of the city's current Disability Access Improvement Grant Program to facilitate ADA compliance for small businesses, a listening forum with California Commission on Disability Access in August of this year as an effort to bring together the disability and small business communities for facilitated dialogue about barriers to both accessing businesses and achieving ADA compliance, and recommendations to improve accessibility across departments in 2024. So in closing, just want to thank Mayor and council for your consideration of adopting the Disability Inclusion Equity Pledge, and I also want to thank members of our community for their continued engagement and valuable input.
That concludes our presentation.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. Why don't we go to public comment?
Francisco Valenzuela?
Good morning, Mayor, council. I was hoping there would have been a big crowd for me, but they all left. You know, I just want to echo what was said regarding the pledge. San Andreas Regional Center, I'm here representing San Andreas Regional Center. We serve over 18,500 families with developmental disabilities, four counties, Santa Clara County, Monterey County, San Benito, and Santa Cruz. Santa Clara County alone, we're serving over 13,000 families. A lot of the families that are impacted in this community, especially in San Jose, need this kind of support. The City of San Jose has always been proactive, has been a great partner to our community, and as we continue to go with increases of cases, there's a lot of families out there that need additional support, but also at the policy level and in recognition with issues that come up in the community. I think the pledge, Rania's work, is going to be totally beneficial for our community. So with the pledge, and I'm hoping, as you move on with this, that there's policy, policy also developed to put, to include funding for services that incorporate supports for these individuals in the, in the community that need your support. I was on the call last night, listening to a lot of community members talking about the housing, and a lot of those families are people with disabilities. And so while you have hard decisions to make, at the same time, don't forget there's individuals in our community who are very vulnerable. This pledge is your commitment to those individuals. As a representative of San Andreas, we support the city council in this pledge. We support Rania's work and any other kind of support you can give to the community, the disability community. With that said, thank you.
Molly?
Good morning. I'm Molly McLeod. Thank you so much for the consideration of the Disability Equity and Inclusion Pledge and the work that's brought us thus far. Appreciate Councilmember Foley, Rania's work, most especially Michelle Mashburn. And I'd also note that the City of San Jose was a leader in the very beginning. After the, you know, there's been decades-long efforts for disability equity, and after the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, San Jose was actually at the forefront in terms of digital accessibility and is making progress. Especially want to thank Matt Opzel, the webmaster, for the, the progress and the, that's been made, but a lot was lost over the years. And so in addition to the citywide organizational commitment, what I'd ask for is a corresponding commitment to increase your own individually and as leaders within the organization, confidence on disability equity and your accessibility practices. For example, in communication, social media, just making sure that both life-saving and ordinary information is there and that with humility, that there's greater openness to learning and documenting the, the best practices so that this is a democracy that includes people with disabilities fully. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Okay. Councilwoman Foley?
Thank you. I'm so excited to see this finally come through. It's really been a little bit of a haul, and I'm so glad that Rania is on staff to take care of this. This actually came from one of my staff members a few years ago, Cameron Henkel, who was my policy person for the disability community. And she met close, often with Michelle and with Molly McLeod about what we can do. And Molly challenged us many times on my virtual office hours to make sure that they were accessible and that our website was accessible. So we took a look at that a few years ago. This was beginning in the pandemic era when we all had to have some sort of accessibility. And we all were challenged with what all that meant, but when Molly challenged us, it was really inspiring for us to figure out what we could do to truly make this city accessible for all of our communities, be they developmental or physical disabilities. And I'm very dedicated and committed to that. I just want to read a little bit of the pledge. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I just want to read the last few bullets and, and say that we commit to engage the disability community. Nothing without us, nothing about us without us. We commit to implement best practices. We commit to build staff capacity and training programs. We commit to prioritize events accessibility. We commit to use the disability inclusive language, and we commit to create disability matrix. I think that's really important. This pledge, and I'm hoping we get an unanimous support of this pledge today, but it's just the beginning. These are just words if we don't put actions behind that. And, and we must show our commitment to the members of the disability community, who, by the way, could be your senior citizen parents who are using a cane or a walker, who maybe were physically capable but no longer are, who have trouble going up and down the steps. There are a lot of disabilities that we see physically and many that we don't. So we have to be aware and concerned, some within our employees. We have to figure out a way to embrace hiring more members from the disability community in our ranks, and we need, and promoting them. And we need to make sure that the city is truly accessible. When I look at San Pedro Square and I see how beautiful it is, the new version of San Pedro Square is much more accessible than the current version of San Pedro Square. So that makes me really, really happy. It's been, it's been a long haul. I'm so glad to be where we are today and to be able to release this inclusion pledge. And I will move the staff's recommendation, and I will also move my memo, which is to return to CED annually with an update as to a status report on policies of, and initiatives, and what we're doing to move this pledge forward. And with that, I, I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Foley, and I just want to also recognize and appreciate your leadership and the work of you and your staff on, on this important topic and collaborating with the, with the community really closely. And thank you to city staff as well for being willing to engage deeply in the work. We have a couple more hands up. I'm going to go to Councilor Torres next. Oh, you're good? Okay, I have your hand up here. Sorry. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Excuse me. I, I want to thank the staff, and I'd like to thank Michelle for being involved. This is really, really critically important. I know how important inclusive environments are, and the more that we can do to create this arena of disability equity, the better we all are. So I'm really delighted. I believe in the pledge, and I hope we all do as well and, and would unanimously support this. So thank you so much for all of your work.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Doan?
Thank you for crafting this pledge, and I echo our Councilmember Pam Foley regarding not only our disability constituent out there, but like my mother, who is 83, she's, she's now, you know, news walker and wheelchair, and those accessibility for people with disability is enormous, especially years ago when I literally worked with the mentally disabled and I had to, to carry the, the chair. And then I, I carried the, the person that I worked with onto the bus, and then later on, I had to carry the chair. So I appreciate when, when there are access for disability. Well, thank you very much again for crafting the, you know, the message that we, we need to, and the pledge to, to support. you know, the message that we need to, and the pledge to, to support. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, with that, we can vote?
Jimenez?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Ortiz?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Doen?
Aye.
Candelaus?
Aye.
Foley?
Aye.
Botra?
I'm alone in my room, and I vote aye.
Thank you. Kamay?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, thank you all once again. We are on to item 10, I'm sorry, item 3.8, which is the proposed ordinance to revise sections of Title 12 in the Mini Code. And there's no staff presentation, so we'll go to public comment first.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Lori Rodriguez. I was present last night. Only had time to speak about two out of my three issues.
Okay, this is not about the budget. This is item 3.8. No, no, the item we're on is 3.8.
Okay, so how do I do that? Please explain.
The budget discussion's 3.4, so that'll happen after 1:30.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Back to council.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Councilor Cohen, seconds. Motion from Jimenez, seeing no other hands, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Torres?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Ortiz?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Doen?
Aye.
Candelaus?
Aye.
Foley? Botra?
I'm alone in my room, and I vote yes.
Kamay?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We are on to item 6.1, Report on Bids and a Word of Contract for River Oaks Regional Stormwater Capture Project. Also no staff report. Let's go to public comment.
I have no public comment.
Okay, back to council. Move a motion. Thank you. Councilor Jimenez, second by Dwan. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Ortiz?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Doen?
Aye.
Candelaus?
Aye.
Foley? Botra?
I'm alone in my room, and I vote yes.
Thank you. Kamay?
Yeah, aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously with one absent.
Thank you. Okay, so we, that was 6.1, which just passed, and I believe that was the last item that was not, that was agendized to be heard before 1:30, or that could be taken before 1:30. So unless I'm missing anything, we're going to recess until 1:30. That was my read of the agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone disagree, so we will recess until 1:30. Thank you all.